That is of knee surgery a couple of weeks ago, so.
George is one person.
I can't answer.
Can you answer that?
I can't answer.
Yes.
Don't have enough help.
Hold on.
We don't want to excuse what we need help. And what I want to tell you right now, the people living in this place, they make a mess. We need control the people, they throw in garbage in the laundry rooms. They don't put only the lo- they don't put only garbage, they put, they use it as a recycling thing for, do a lot of things in there.
Right.
Okay?
Yep.
I'm not saying anything else on the floor, I know we have to wash the floor and clean the carpet. You know, I want to tell you right now, the people living in this place, they make a mess. Every day, every single day, we have furniture, we have plastic bags and rocking and put in the floor, in the laundry room, anywhere. We're not saying we don't want to do it, but we have to first, but we have to put the cameras in there for watching who is doing that.
Right.
What we have to do is going to help to us, who's the person doing that things in our community. This building was the favorite building in the past ten, twenty, fifteen years, and now it's, it works. Please, you need help for, by somebody's doing a lot of things to us. I promise that we're going to start cleaning up. We are busy now, we're busy now, with a lot of things we have to do outside. We promise we're going to start cleaning the carpet and making nice stuff. It's good.
Um, yeah, the other thing about, yeah, it's Maryland, right? I think, uh, yeah, that's for sick knees. Um, one of the things that they were known for in that building is they, they, they did go around and they were very, um, good about keeping up that building. So maybe if we had more people like that in each building, that helps transition, you know?
But, you know, like in my building in Yorkshire. We have fortunately people in there that sweep, that clean. That pour disinfectant in the laundry room. We have to do it ourselves. But the question become, why should we have to do it ourselves?
What are we doing out there?
In an emergency?
Right.
Yes. That's another thing.
Let me finish.
But this is an ongoing problem. And I agree with the lady sitting next to me.
Right.
We don't have enough maintenance staff to do, to maintain. The people that come in, the housekeepers, half the time, they don't do a good job. So it's not my problem.
Well, if they're not doing a good job, it could be a question more of like the staff that we have rather than, we need more.
Well, you know, George, you don't have enough people.
Okay, we're, we're looking at that, yes.
Don't have enough people.
Uh, we need to wrap this up though, really.
We don't have enough.
But this is important, this is important.
I know it's important, but we have, we have a lot of important things.
Actually, you know what? Let me say that.
Anyway, this is the last thing, this is the last thing.
Okay, I, I want to say something.
Maybe we should have more people, but the people are very hard.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, they were very hard.
Ladies and gentlemen, can we, can we please try to add some decorum here instead of just everybody yelling out? This is the last one.
Okay, I want to say something about the maintenance crew. There is no supervision on the maintenance crew. There are two people, George and Ricardo.
That's it.
Why aren't they overseeing their maintenance crew to make sure work is getting done? Because I take my time and I walk through my building and I give work order after work order after work order and none of it gets done. There's no supervision.
Actually, Miriam, it's not just George, it's Dan's job to make sure that these things get done.
I did say that I was going to do the last one, so I need to go on, I'm sorry, I have to go on for a minute. Uh, FICO score, Dan? I'm sorry, there was a motion and a second, oh no, we did that. Uh, FICO score.
Yeah, it was to ratify.
We did. We did, yeah, we already did.
I've, I've never seen them before.
No, never.
Dan, FICO.
He's known about FICO.
Big plan. New plans?
Oh, okay, you want to have FICO?
In May, John and Tony, and you, um, in May, the credit, credit slash FICO score is increased to six seventy from six twenty. And you're just asking for it to ratify the six seventy. Please. And we, we have, we did approximately fifty to sixty applications, I'd say a month. Tony, would you say that's about right?
Fifty, sixty.
Fifty, sixty a month. And, and, and six seventy is considered fair, a fair credit score. And we're getting people that have over seven hundred into the eight hundred. So we're getting, uh, you know, quality, uh, people. And that's why we.
Wait, before we, um, open it up to the audience, uh, we need a motion and a second to even discuss it. So is there a motion for the six seventy? Um, anybody want to make a motion for, for the six seventy?
Yeah, don't approve it. Leave it at six twenty.
For six seventy, FICO score.
Well, leave it at six twenty.
Cut it in half. Make it six fifty.
Anybody?
Make it six fifty.
Carl, if you want.
There hasn't even been a motion.
There hasn't been a motion yet, so. Is somebody, Carl, you want to make a motion for the six seventies?
You know, it's a bitch, I mean, just go home. I know, that's, just go home. You only come when there's a problem.
Mar- Marcy? Are you there?
Very serious, of course.
I don't hear anybody making a motion. Do you want to make a motion for the six seventy?
Since I helped you, you need to help me.
Marcy?
Hey Doug, since I helped you.
Yeah, it's fair.
Okay.
Six twenty.
Six twenty.
Uh, six now, I mean, what was it before?
Wait.
What was it before?
Six twenty.
Six twenty.
And it's six seventy now.
No, we are.
It's not, it's not eligible.
Okay, then you find somebody else who will do it. Bad. Bad.
Does, does anybody have a motion for anything?
Because I'm not going for six twenty. That's ridiculous.
Doug, tell, what about six fifty?
Get into the field, honey.
What about six fifty, would you do six fifty?
No.
Go and run.
Okay, so.
Six seventy is considered fair.
Doreen, can you explain to the benefits of the six seventy?
Tony, John, Tony, John, you.
Okay, six, six, six seventy is more than fair. Please understand that six fif- six twenty is a very low average. Six seventy is more than fair. Most people between six seventy and seven hundred are people that are responsible with their bills. They take care of their accounts. They have to pay their unit owners, okay? The unit owners pay us, but they have to pay, this makes them responsible. Why should we refer to people that are six twenties? Six twenties people that make seven, eight dollars an hour. We don't want people that make seven, eight thousand dollars. You want responsible people, you want people that are professionals, nurses, doctors, lawyers. Why do you want people that are unprofessional living here?
Okay, tell you what, um, I'll make some motion for six seventy. I don't know what's going to, what's before, we need a motion and a second. I'll make the motion, I'm going to relinquish my control technically under, uh, brought to the board. The president should not make a motion. Um, so I'll relinquish to.
Carl, for a second.
No, come on, make a motion, Carl.
All right. You're going to make a motion, um, for the six seventies, there's a second. I second your discussion.
Six seventy.
Okay, is that, you seconding it?
No, he can't second it, he's a manager.
No, he's just right. Anybody want to second that?
I second it.
He can't.
Okay, Marcy was seconded it. Uh, now that's the discussion. So, first we'll open it up to the board.
He did not make a right motion, he just said six seventy, he's got to say the right motion.
Well, I made the motion.
But you cannot make a motion.
I made the, no, no, I made the motion because I relinquished control of the election, yes, I made the motion. Okay? So six seventy was the motion, ratifying six seventy. I seconded the motion.
No, you can't, no, no, you actually made the motion.
Oh my God.
I know, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, we're moving on to the actual discussion now, okay? So the motion was six seventy, FICO score of six seventy, okay? Four leases, we all understand what that means. Now we move to discussion on the board. Anybody want to discuss that on the board, first of all?
Well, I just, well, I just want to say, yes, I mean, it's one of the criteria, but, you know, you shouldn't kill any person because of the bad credit. We should, you should.
We're not killing you.
I mean, you know, not, not literally, but, you know, right? So we should, it's supposed to be a little bit, you know, that flexible, right? I mean, no, well, why did, why did I make a motion for, for, for him? Because she got a low, low score, right? So we punish him because of that. And we make him a year of maintenance in advance. This is his punishment. Yeah, oh, he got punished, right?
But that's another issue, that has nothing to do one thing with the other. That's a good point.
No, 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 it's not, right, you got the.
But that part was fixed.
Let me just, before his credit scores go, someone could easily be a doctor or a lawyer or all the things that, that she had just pointed out and still have a score that's not low, but just below six seventy. So if we have a surgeon that comes in with no criminal record and he makes a quarter of a million dollars a year and has a six sixty FICO score, to reject him in a place like this where there, there's plenty of people that are low quality and we're going to reject someone, a surgeon making quarter of a million dollars a year because his credit score is six sixty, which is above the national average? That seems absurd. And I, that, that just seems crazy.
But the national average is six fifty.
That's why I said, okay?
That's why we're taking six seventy.
That, that just furthers my point.
Just a little bump.
If the national average is six fifty, which I don't know for sure, but let's say it is, we're, we're basing Lauderdale. We're having a higher standard at six seventy for Lauderdale and not making an exception for a surgeon. And having that surgeon be rejected even though his credit score could be ten points above the national average? That just, it's just illogical.
Well, Doug, that's the reason that he has a low credit score, this, this hypothetical that you're saying.
Yeah.
Is perhaps because of his education and he must owe like maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Half his room doesn't have a six seventy score and that's, this is a fact. So I mean, that, that, you can't accuse on someone on the basis of they have a six sixty credit score. What my understanding is, is that the, wait, hold on. What my understanding is, is that the sales and lease exercises discretion where there's a number of criteria that apply. And if they're low in one cri- a little bit under on one criteria, but a little over on some other criteria, then they will use their discretion. So if it's a six sixty in one case, but their income is higher than the requirements, then my understanding is that there have been cases where they approved because it's on the margin, right?
You look at it, we look at every aspect of it.
So it's a, it's like a general guideline. Guideline, template, yeah. But to, 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 um, Tony's point, if the national average is six fifty, I think it's fair to add minimum. I don't know what the national. No, I'm just saying, if that, if, what, what.
Let's put that's national ad- averages.
So we're going to be twenty points above. I don't know what the national average is.
I don't, I, I'm not sure, but I'm saying, let's put the national average is six seventy.
Uh, Carl, you're the first.
Let's look at what is reflected by the credit score and Tony brought it up. A person who is responsible probably has a pretty good score. They take their obligations seriously and responsible people are not selectively responsible. We have complaints, people are throwing garbage and, and disrespecting the place. These are irresponsible people. They don't take responsibility for their actions, they don't have any concern for their neighbors. They don't take care of anything.
Exactly.
This kind of behavior is never selective. If you have a poor credit score, you probably do everything in your life shabby. If you have a good credit score, you take pride in yourself and what's going. Isn't that the kind of neighbor that you want?
I think you make a valid point, but I think that nobody is suggesting to have a poor credit score as a criteria. Nobody's suggesting a five hundred credit score or five fifty.
With all due respect, you guys are missing the point here. These are renters. There's, the renter has to, to, to make precedent or to be, to, I'm, I'm missing the word here, accountable to the owner. Half of these owners don't live here, they live abroad, okay? Let's, let's call it state of space, okay? So the board, the maintenance people, we, the community, have no recourse when these people that are renters are doing dirty stuff, okay? They're supposed to be, they're supposed to be answering to the owners of these units. These owners have no accountability to. Can I, can I, can I finish, please? So that is part of the problem. Part of the problem is a lot of these owners don't live here, they don't know what the unit owners are doing.
Thank you, um, Marcy just came to me something about, because I don't really know what average was. It says that generally a score of five, this is from Google, um, Sunset, no?
No, 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 TransUnion.
TransUnion, TransUnion. Says that five, okay, a score of five forty-nine generally is considered, uh, and lower is considered bad. Five fifty to six forty-nine is poor, six fifty to six ninety-nine is fair. So six seventy would be right in that.
Exactly, that's why we put it.
Okay, anyway, so, I mean, how comfortable with six seventy, but, but, let's just have a vote.
I'm leaving now.
And, and see, well, no, there is a discussion that already started in the board. Anybody else?
Three minutes. I'm sorry.
First of all, some owners do live here, like I do, and I've been here since nineteen seventy-six, so not all owners are absentee.
I understand that, but you're all arguing about the renters, the renters have to be accountable to the owner.
Listen, listen, and I'm the owner. Now, if the owner, if the owner has a track record of paying the maintenance on time, the assessments, they, they don't make trouble. This is my business and there's other people like me.
That's your business, but my, my, this is my home, it's your business, but my home.
Wait a second, guys, let me finish, let me finish. I have the hot.
You need to, you need to address the board.
The FBI agent has a six credit credit score, he's been living here for two and a half years. I have a pharmacist for this game.
Not him.
After three days, he has a five.
It's all done.
This, five years. Who cares, their mother and their mother, their medical, their credit. Many, many of these people have.
I mean, it's hard to keep them.
This is hard work for people who have no criminal record. They take their, their personal, their, their voice, I know all of them. Now, if that person is, you know, who, who practices a patient, you know, you act just said, we're coming to check.
Hello, we're going to continue, are we going to go home? Are we going to end the whole?
John, John.
We, we need to finish.
Has good income and they have no.
I think everybody should walk out.
There's a motion on the table, you have to. Okay, okay, we need to go, that's it, that's it. I'm going to. We need to let this reject that one. All right, I reject the prior motion.
We need to vote on it first, oh, sorry. And then if you want to vote, no, you have to vote now. Carl, call the roll on six seventy. John.
All right, I.
Marat.
No.
Doug.
No.
Marciel. Crystal. Carl, yes.
So passes.
It passes, it passes.
But you know what?
Oh, Louis, Louis, Louis. I'm sorry, Louis.
No.
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 Four yeses.
Four yeses, three, four.
One of three, it passed, I'll miss.
It's four to three. No, it's passed.
There were three no's.
Yes. Three no's, four yeses.
Motion codes.
The motion carries.
No more discussion on it.
Doug, do you think you have what Tony says, she says, takes everything with consideration?
Now, let me ask you something.
No, 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 we're, we're, we're done with that item.
My question, don't tell me.
We're done with that item.
Here's the thing, what will happen with those people now, with the list we are, we know it? What will happen with them if they don't meet the six seventy requirement?
We're done with the item.
That doesn't, that doesn't come into effect on what we do.
Anyway, lease application changes, Dan.
Stop bringing people in that don't like charity.
Okay, folks, let's not talk about this anymore, we're moving on. Okay, so how are we going to get them out of it? Can you, can you address that real quick?
I don't know anything about this.
Oh, Doreen?
Sales are here.
The, the, the first one, it looks like there was a change on one of the.
She's going to be here all night, everyone.
Okay, um. This is in reference to, there's one person.
Wait a minute, no, let's do the, let's do the easy one first. I think it's, uh, there's some language added on the lease application.
Yes.
That states that please, no, wait.
Yes, on the lease application on the bottom, there was a, a quote of, a, a statement that says, I certi- I certified that all information provided in this application material is true and I understand that any false statement made herein is sufficient reason for rejection of this application and grounds revocation regardless of the date of discovery, the person signs it and dates it.
Okay, that, so that basically to put them on notice that, uh, we don't want them to, you know, basically lie in the application, say that they're one person or two people and then they bring in their cousin and their father-in-law and mother-in-law and everybody else. Okay, so, so the consequences would be that if they do lie after signing this, then we can, um, we can, well, if we've already approved, but then whatever.
And while we found out, we can still have a right to evict.
Any victim if they were ten.
We can't ev- we can't evict though.
That's right, you can't.
We can't evict.
We can't do that.
So, but in other words, it would be a fine or something like that.
Okay.
Because we can't evict, it's not, we're not the landlord.
I'll, I'll check the.
Okay, so basically, um, yeah, I'm fine with it, I just wanted to make sure we understood what the, what remedies we have.
So why did they put it there if you can't?
The only remedy, well, we don't, the remedy that we have is, is to, uh, fine. We can't evict, we can't, we are not, if we're not the landlord, we can't, we're not going to use our attorney at three hundred dollars an hour to evict somebody else's tenant, you know? We can, we can fine them and make them evict.
John, so how do you do that? In other words, if somebody comes in and finds the owner and I say, uh, Mr. X is going to rent the apartment and we find out later that he has four people in that apartment.
Right. Then we would fine the owner and let them know that they need to, um.
That, that somehow that contract would have to be broken.
How much time is fine?
You may not, you may not.
It's up to a thousand dollars, uh, maximum for, for, uh, offense, basically.
But is there some guideline, I mean, certain offenses?
No, they're all maximum a thousand.
But I have a question. I have a family moved out of my building, the Marseille building. You guys actually think that they are in the Grenoble building?
Okay, I'm not going to.
When they're in fact over there.
I don't want to get into that right now because it's a totally different issue. It's a totally different issue from this one, but then we have a very long.
But you guys are not keeping a track of it.
That's right, that's exactly right.
No, I think, I think we brought that to the attention of the, uh, security manager already.
Everything that was discussed here tonight, it just seems to go.
That's, that's one thing I don't like to come to those meetings because you're talking to, you're just don't care what they're saying. You just don't care what they're saying.
That's why we're here and we, we don't get paid for this, we just come here because we just love this so much.
I understand, I understand, but what we have.
We don't share at all, okay?
I understand.
Anyway, let's go, let's move on. Um, we have a, we have a motion and a second, um, I think, was there a motion and a second?
We're just going to change the word.
No, there wasn't a motion, okay. Can we get a motion on it? This, this is about the wording that was just read. Um, will we have a motion and a second on that lease language? Any, anybody want to make that motion?
Carl, you want to make a motion?
Marat, you want to make a motion? Forget about the penalty, it's just the language here.
We're taking the word eviction out.
There's no, there's no evidence. Okay.
Taking the word eviction out, okay.
So Marat needs a motion, second, anybody want to second it?
Carl, you want to second it?
Okay, Carl, second. Uh, any objection?
John, wait a second, you're going to take the word eviction out, but you know something? The owner should be penalized somehow and say, you know what, you broke the contract. You let these people come in here and it's your responsibility.
They're going to be fined.
You know what, I, I have never.
That's all you can do. That's all we can do by law. What else would you like us to do?
We can't, we can't evict, that's the whole thing, we cannot evict leases on our tenants.
What is the other method?
We're discussing, I'm not going to go back and say it ten more times. Okay, next item is the, uh, okay, there was a question or complaint about the rollover application.
Yeah, we, we have a rollover agreement that we've been using for a long time and, uh, we have one owner that's complaining that it's too many paper, too much paperwork or whatever. And actually, the owner has to sign in two places and the rest is really the applicant that has to sign. And, um,
it's been used ever since I can remember and, um, now it's getting, I was saying that it's too many pages. That is redundant.
What, I, I, I want to table this one, it's like, he's not here, um, I think he comes back next month. Why don't we just table it for next month because we have a long one. Uh, anybody, anybody want to make a motion to table?
One person complained.
No? Okay, Mar- Mar- Marciel made a motion, uh, table it, I'll second.
We'll have it this July.
Uh, we'll just put it off a minute. We have enough stuff. Uh, next thing is the hurricane cleanup repairs follow-up. Dan, can you go through the expenses that we've had, that we have to prove? Anything that we have to see? Just the expenses that we have to prove.
You pulled it out. You pulled out the summary from the report.
I'm going to get it.
Let's get a key.
John, until, until Doreen comes back, can I ask you a question? Uh, I mean, till Doreen comes back. Uh, I have gone into many places, condos that have over, that have.
Everybody is, okay, order please in the house, everybody's talking.
John, I can't understand why they can't take a Dawn shovel and shovel the damn dirt around here. It should have been done days ago. I mean, it actually, I mean, you have the beginning, the front looks clean, the rest of it is horrible. Take a damn shovel and shovel it up.
Talking about the hurricane.
Yeah, I mean, this is, I'm, I'm, I mean, unbelievable, it's taking so long. And don't tell me about the trees being cut down. I want to see this cleaned up by the end of the week. I want to see that done.
You can't get into your, you can't get your car into the parking spot in there.
It's filthy, it's absolutely filthy.
Um, Dan, is, is that the, is that the lawn company that's doing that or who's doing that?
Yes, the, the, uh, pre-cremity company are doing it and they will be back this week to work on it. They have other associations that are in worse shape than us.
You know, everything is cleaned up, I've gone to more associations that have more apartments, then get shovels out here and let the maintenance people clean.
Our maintenance people are working on leaks in people's apartments.
Oh, well, then you know what, get me a damn shovel and I'll shovel the damn thing. And you'll see how clean it'll be.
We got that in mind, yes.
I'll, I'll do it, don't, I, I clean my building.
Ten people to volunteer, we would have gotten all this cleaned up by now.
I guarantee you. I did it in Wilma, I have no problem in there.
Wherever you want to get ten people to volunteer.
You put up a sign and I, I guarantee you get ten, twelve people to volunteer, you get them shoveling.
Tony, would you like to, anybody here want to raise a hand? Raise your hand if you want to volunteer. Doreen, please get everybody's phone number and ask to have them pick a day.
I'm volunteering, get me the Dawn broom and, uh, the shovel.
Oh, Doreen's right here. Can you come up and give us your number?
No, I, I can take my word for it, just give me the Dawn shovel.
Come on, we have a maintenance company that we pay.
But that's not the point, the point, that's not the point, that's the.
No, the point is, John, the point is, John. The maintenance. Come on, can I, can I please speak? We pay a maintenance company, right?
We don't have a maintenance company, it's all in-house. It's not an outside company.
The company that comes to the lawn maintenance around here, isn't that the company that is being paid to cut the trees down? Is that a separate?
It's a separate division.
Okay, so they did take an analysis, an assessment of the area and how many people it's going to take to clean this place up?
Okay, but that's not the point, the point is, there's people willing to volunteer and you're saying, you know, don't let anybody volunteer. I don't want to say don't let anybody volunteer, they want to volunteer.
I'm just doing.
To get this fixed, cleaned, cleaned up faster.
John, I'm doing my area, that's it.
So, uh.
Give me a broom.
Dan, can you contact each of these people that raised their hand? I think you have Marcia's number probably, you have Frank's number probably.
You have my number.
Yeah, okay, all right.
And you know about, I'll clean everything that has to be moved out of state.
And I'll do the, uh, either ways, but I'm not picking the dirt up, I'm letting you know that.
Okay, so what was the item we were on?
Yeah, but one way. Where, where can you put it? Where, where, where will we put it, you tell us.
Dan, are you ready?
It is a pot.
Yeah, we put it in front of your door.
Can we, can we just borrow?
Well, it's like, yeah, I'm going to put it in front of your door.